Good to see everybody this evening. Hello, Mr. Sancy, how you doing? Hello, Benny. Now, we'll start the board session this morning and this afternoon. And Gorgas might, then tonight's special night will have a swearing in of two members of the City Council, as well as two of our four-year term, congratulations. And they'll have some promotional stuff as well, so let's just get back to it. And then after that, there's a reception over in the community room for friends and family. So that will be... And then take pictures with them, because that's fun, good. All right, minutes for the December 28th. And on that one, we have the regular session, the work session, and the executive session. Was there any discussions related to that? Here now, swearing in, Councilwoman Dean and Councilwoman May. Before that, the board's presentation, none of it will be too much of an issue. Police Department vehicle, we've got one pre-ordered, Chief, you want to talk about your vehicle?
Yes, sir. I think you were pre-ordering a vehicle that's approved on the budget. Again, very similar to the one we previously purchased. If it weren't for the one more practice this time, asking for it a little earlier. Production won't have it to us at least until April, late April. So we just kind of wanted to get ahead of the curve. And that took permission to have from the Council, the mayor, to assign that transaction. But we don't have a vehicle as of yet.
Questions, Ms. Snell?
No questions.
Ms. Trent?
No questions.
Ms. Qua?
No questions.
Ms. Dean?
No questions.
Excellent. Approval for request, acceptance of a criminal justice court name grant in the amount of $8,650.
Good evening, sir. Yeah, this is the grant that I was able to announce to you all last meeting, just before the holiday. This grant will fund the purchase of a use-of-force simulator to be installed in the police department. There is no match by the city, it's a 100% fund. The only thing we need to do is be able to identify agency executives in the grant specified. The mayor has to sign those documents. We're asking permission for him to sign and to acknowledge the agency that has done to manage the award through CJCC.
Excellent. Questions, Ms. Dean?
Um, no questions.
Ms. Qua?
No questions.
Ms. Trent?
No questions.
Ms. Snell?
No questions.
All right, we had a discussion at the last council meeting in reference to the medical director. And it's changed, so we want to update us on that. I think this is just the contract for approval.
Yes, thank you for Chief Swin. So, good evening. The Dr. Edens would be the new medical director, the reason, obviously, you mentioned. We have to have a doctor that oversees our program because of the equipment we carry, the procedures that we do, and the medications that we have. Dr. Augustine's been with us for many, many years, was fantastic, and I spoke here, but he's saying a full-time job out of Florida. Dr. Edens is a local medical director. He grew up here, went to school here, Georgia, Emory Mercer. Apparently works at Upson, Heard and See Room. Has been an emergency room doctor and a medical director for many, many years. We want to just take up the contract that we have with Dr. Augustine and continue on that. He has accepted the same exact amount, so there's no financial impact to it versus what has already been approved. It's just it will be a new contract with a name on it.
Excellent. Questions, Ms. Snell?
No questions.
Ms. Trent?
No questions. Just be reminded that on the contract, when section two party listed, first party is the senior moral, and the second party doesn't have the address go along in the package that I have here. So make sure when we sign the contract, make sure when we sign the contract, the address of the second party in the contract is listed in the contract.
Yes, ma'am, I got that email today. And the contract, last time it went through, does have his address down toward the middle of the contract. And I know there's a line at the top on the first one that just says, "Dr. Edens of Georgia." And then halfway down the contract where the two parties are listed, his address is on that one. So that one is affected.
Ms. Qua?
No questions.
Ms. Dean?
Um, if you have one question, the term of the contract will start is for him now?
Immediately, yes, ma'am.
That would go year-to-year?
It is year-to-year, yes.
Excellent. We'll add an agenda item. This will be a resolution to set the commercial residential sanitation rates. And we'll need to do that because it's going in the agenda. But we'll have discussions here in just a second about sanitation.
Um, did you want to discuss the orders?
Um, which one? We're going to do the sanitation first, or do you want to... Yes, why?
The sanitation?
Well, it's...
Okay. This is the ordinance for reference to the discussions that we've had on this with the temporary contract extension that you all voted on previous year. And this is the final negotiated prices that we will be doing with Waste Pro. And it will essentially, on the residential sanitation, be $23.11 per cart per month of pickups. So that's the best I believe we're going to get on this contract negotiation. Put forth the ordinance for that, as well as the tax rates.
So just taking it apart in pieces. As we're trying to figure out how to do a little bit of a hybrid thought, and this is just residential, we'll get into the first way in just a second. That we still have to have some staffing, and the staffing has to be able to be, you know, trained and to be on the truck. So right now, we're paying $35.11, $35 something?
Uh, $35.43.
And then as soon as we have that capacity, it would drop to $23... I'm not sure how to read this part.
Twenty-three line.
Twenty-three line, all right. So that kind of changes that. We know currently, you know, our citizens are paying about $15 and some change.
Correct.
So this is kind of the debate before the City Council as to which, you know, price we charge. But hopefully, we'll have the staffing on that truck at some point. And then that is what we are trying to set out. So that would be the recommendation that we bring from $15 and some odd cents to the $23 and some odd cents in that process. So that's residential. So let's just take that as the first section, because that is a political decision. Questions, Ms. Snell?
No questions, but it's...
Ms. Trent?
So we're planning to charge $23.11 per cart a month?
It's not a month, it's... Yes, I'm sorry, that is per cart per month for the one we pick.
Okay, and the plan that we live into is hybrid, what is with the car side pickup? And we have the staff to pull the car up to the curb and pull it back, is that correct?
It's for...
Not totally. In the discussions that we had over the last couple of weeks, the sanitation company is currently paying a independent contractor to ride on the back of their truck and to be able to pull the carts through that way. So the original thought was to get ahead of them and behind them, and survive and be able to make this work at the same time. In this case, if this will go through as it appears, that there was a discussion of that effect. So we still have the staffing issues for the Public Works Department, all of that remains true. It's just the method would be slightly different. So in this case, as the truck would be going through, our staff would be pulling it and pulling it back at the same time. Very similar to what is being done around that. Logistically, that one makes more sense.
So we still have to pay for the staff to...
That is correct.
How is the staff looking at that?
Um, in the discussion that we had earlier, there was a combination of staff. Because it was partially Public Works, partially dealing with leaf and limb or bulk, and then all of that. So on the truck itself, it would be just two. Obviously, we would have a third for the event that they're out on vacation or whatever. And we would still anticipate pulling in additional four to be able to staff the Public Works Department accordingly.
So we're looking at two employees minimum, is the...
On the truck itself, technically, it's three of it.
And the one back out here, I would say, most of the time, we have two employees on the truck to pull the car back and forth. So we are paying the contract of $35 per month. We're charging the resident $23.11 this month. We will lose...
Once it goes, once we arrive on the truck, that company is only charging us $23.11. And what we're doing is we're asking the building rate to be changed to $23.11.
So how much is the cost of having employee and the benefit and everything for the staff to do that work?
Well, the employees are actually going to be pulled from Public Works anyway, so it would be already in staffing budget. They're not fully staffed, so it would be... There's no additional cost with this plan. It's just the training that could be incurred to put them on the back of the truck with Waste Pro, which is required by them as an offset for their insurance liability.
With the total staffing available to Public Works, there is a cost. The ability to be on the back of the truck, there is a number to do that. I don't know that that one has been figured out in terms of the total cost. I ask that it's still comparable. When you look at the presentation I made the other day, you know, we have a $300,000 total number. We realize that the sanitation truck is going to be running through the city anyway. And then someone's in there is the answer. Specific questions, I'm not 100% sure of that, I'd have to pull that back out. What we do know is at least that's what is being charged to us through sanitation. And if you're going to the entire period of flying, you still have to have additional personnel in Public Works Department.
Yeah, in the case if we use the... Because sanitation is the... A different operation, it's not in a general fund, it's on the operation, uh, just in the enterprise fund. And that cost of using the manpower and the hour, we should have the methodology to allocate all the spans to run that operation, is still incalculated. It will be, it won't be a forecast, but it will be a split up depending on the timing consuming, perhaps, employee to work on that project, if that makes any sense.
Yes, it makes sense, certainly. I don't know if that's numbers for you currently, but I mean, that's a... It's a self-cost as far as how many employees that you have currently as well, to the current benefits and the package with those as far as the sour goes, so...
So how long do you think we would be able to have the staff going to do follow the truck? So the price we pay, the contract though, will be reduced to $23.11?
I wouldn't imagine... The target is no more than 60 days. I would say 90 is the longest, but the target would be 60 days. And I think we can compress that and make that shorter. As soon as we have staff available, there, we can train them with Waste Pro. We just have to set up that training, which would be rather be...
Okay, so running two months, we'd have to be $15,000 a month for the tire and between $35 and $23.11 for two months with 1,300 household per month. And that will be the cost to the project, plus the allocation cost of the number of employee in the hour that they have in. That will be permanent later on, for the cost of providing the backdoor service, is that correct?
Um, I would have... I'm not quite clear on your numbers there, but I would assume if you looked those up, that might be correct, but I couldn't confirm that.
So I'm determining a quick calculation here. $35 a month minus $23.11 is $11.80.
Correct.
And that multiple to 1,300 household, it will go into the $15,457 a month. And multiply, or that to two, that you're looking at $30,000 a month for that, for two months, until we establish the staff. And even after we establish the staff to follow the truck, the cost of having the backdoor service to us still would be the allocation of the cost of the number of employee with the time and the space they're spending to get the service done. Because at that time, what we pay into the contractor is equal with what we're charging the customer.
Correct. Ms. Qua?
Go back to what I mentioned before, that it doesn't matter which work we're going to do. The hardest option is the contractor is charging us $23 something. And it's going to cost other operation costs to get to pull the cart back and forth. So whatever cost it, I think it would be fair enough to pass it on to, you know, to the consumer.
Correct. And that's kind of the plan here, because it does increase it, but it also will be a buffer there before they reduce it.
Yeah, that would be fair, because, you know, it wouldn't be fair. We keep complaining that we don't have enough money to pay our employee and take that fund out of the general fund to, you know, to eat up the cost from the consumer, which they should pay for, and use that money to whatever, for the operation cost of for the city.
I have a lot of thought. Thank you. Ms. Snell? Ms. Dean?
I think this option is a better option than what we had on the table before. So that the Public Works staff is not having to put miles on their body, they're in care. If they're riding on the back of the truck, just like the sanitation workers are now, it's basically, we're replacing the sanitation's staff with ours. And when they're not picking up trash, we still have them as Public Works employees to do other jobs.
And tonight, what we're looking for is to separate for residential and commercial. Commercial, we'll talk about again in just a second. Because we have a three-pronged approach, one of those Public Works staffing by itself, one of those dealing with kind of inefficiencies of bulk, plus leave and limb. And then third is actually dealing with sanitation section. We're already starting initial discussions on the budget. We would anticipate, you guys have a budget scheduled, we just saw that. And as part of that, all of those other questions will be addressed. And we'll have plenty of time to talk about that. So what we really need are those full costs that we want to account for and maybe necessary. So just make sure that happens right, at least on residential. Whether we have a consensus or not is a question. You'll change the residential rates from $15 and some odd cents, which is what we charge now, to the $23.11?
Correct.
Any additional questions? Ms. Snell? I'll ask somebody.
No, no questions.
Ms. Trent?
Could we have the calculation of the labor cost to do this hybrid program? The allocation of that manpower hour that you actually tie up to do the job, unestimated?
I can put that together for you, sir.
Then...
Okay, Ms. Qua?
Then we're going to determine how much we're going to charge for the rest of the... Total money, that would be a phantom, I would think.
Ms. Dean?
So are you saying we're going to change the contract?
You're not going to change the contract, the difference you can change is the price that we charge the customer. As soon as we have a consensus. Our recommendation is going to be to pass it tonight and set. It will need to make modifications to it, we can do it as part of the version process and have any other type of changes necessary, either at the end of next year or at the end of the budget, which will be June 31st.
So this will go forward from year to year for three years, or not?
Certainly. Well, because we wouldn't be changing that adjustment, we'd be trying to enter into the contract.
Correct, yes.
And then that is just like everything else, it's one year. No matter how many cycles you have, it's only good for one year based on the state.
Right. But it also will include in that contract the name of the cancellation, as opposed to the thirty.
Yeah.
And we can, that's separate these two. Somebody wants to make a different answer on sanitation service contracts the whole time. But the price of, you know, if it does pass, we're going to adjust that, so...
This is the ordinance, and it's the force leading...
A judicial resolution.
You say ordinance, so here, so we're not able to go on that tonight. And for us to sit here, this package should be given to us a few minutes ago, we go on meeting star. I'm asking Council, how you feel comfortable to make a decision that impacts a lot of customer, business, or commercial in just a matter of few minutes?
Your pricing is slightly negotiable as far as what you charge your clients. But your contract is not. In other words, those are the bids that have been accepted. Pretty much, you only have one company that's capable of delivering. We've been negotiating with that over a certain period of time, the city on the commercial side. The contract needs to get through. If we have it written as an ordinance, I don't think that's required, I think you can actually pass it in a resolution. And we can certainly change the name of the document. Other questions, Ms. Dean?
Um, no questions.
Okay, so one more question.
Sure.
So figure what is it, so you're asking us to accept in the contract, not to set a price we charge?
To technically do both. You have a contract that we need to sign. You have an idea of what we're now being asked to pay, that's one. And the second one is to set the actual fee schedule, that's what we're going to talk to clients for both residential and commercial.
And you'll have those figures at the next meeting.
Actually, these kind of... And then you should have been impacted before.
And when did we have this item added to our agenda?
We're going to add it to the agenda. That's the review of the discussion, there's a lot of time.
You know, without determination of how much we're going to charge the rest of the month, I don't think it's fair to vote for what up there.
So we got discussions on residential, got it. Now let's talk commercial. Rick?
On the commercial rates, we've actually negotiated these down. The price points of Waste Pro are fairly solid, so there's not much room for this. But there's a substantial decrease in prices in the proposed contract numbers that you have here. This is what we're currently paying on a standard contract. And I think the other numbers are attached as well. But it's anywhere in the neighborhood of $150 to $200 less on the actual, on this contract agreement that we're looking at, this proposal currently.
And just a little bit of background. The city's original contract would have ended on October 31st. We entered into a 90-day extension by its time. That is where they... And during that time period, we also brought to bid for both residential and commercial services. And for the most part, this is simple commercial for just a minute. All of the three that actually submitted you bids, the difference between what you were paying versus what they're bidding was a substantial increase. So there's some numbers available, but it almost doubled. So when you're looking at labor, which is hard to come by these days, gas and wind prices, everyone that's sitting in the audience, you know, you went to the grocery store and you bought meat and whatever else you liked, and you realize you aren't getting it for the same price you were getting it yesterday. And that's created a problem in the industry, and that's just the reality of it. So regardless of which one of the three that you would take, assuming that they were all available to do work, they were all increases of a substantial number. Then from that choice, you have to look at which ones could provide you this service. An existing company that you have already has all the containers out there. You don't have to have a lot of changes in that time period. Waste Management would have been the other company that would have been available. But just to swap out the containers alone, there's just not physically enough time to be able to do that. In which case, we would be missing our commercial clients, and that would not be in our best interest. But that still doesn't change. What does change is the amount of money that the city is paying for commercial garbage services on a monthly rate. And that difference between what we were paying and what we're paying now is a substantial difference to the tune of about $60,000 to $75,000 a month. So that should be, we're losing roughly that amount. You still have to be able to implement, no matter how the contract is through. And we would anticipate, from what I've seen so far, and you have this information in front of you, that we will have a loss for the last three months, coming into November, December, January, of about $200,000. So we need to pass that cost along now. And there's really only one company that can do that. You should have in your package, not only what the changes were, but remember, we were implementing as part of current budget process the same percentages in different things along those lines. There was some negotiation, the prices were, just using one of the container categories, which was, I think, a little over $1,000. And I think that number came down to about $770, give or take, where the prior, original price was closer to $4.50. So on one end, if you're paying $1,000 and you get that $7 and something, you know, that's not bad. If you're sitting on the other side, and you're going from $4.70 to $800, you're not, you're not thanking anybody for that. But that is the reality. And there's lots of issues related to that. So now the time to have discussions related to that, subject. Ms. Snell?
Yeah, I mean, I understand we're bringing it down from the extension price. And you said there's not a lot of wiggle around, because where we are now has taken a lot of the vibe.
That's correct, and I don't believe there will be any gain in any further negotiations at this point.
And I believe you have what the contract price is, and then what the recommended price is, and what we would set for the clients based on which container it is, and should, is that what that is correct?
Correct.
And you have the... Other questions, Ms. Trent?
I just, the package I have here just looks like I just only have the price what we're charging customer, but not what are we expecting to have to pay for the rest to the contractor. So how would I make this decision, how would I discuss?
It's a little pressure one, just because... It's in the work session, I think, with that other...
Now, this is going to be the original that was paid in the contract from October 31st. Okay? And these are all comparable charts, so they should be at that point, I think it was laying on the table. So two-yard container, three times a week. But we got time, so just review the chart. Ms. Qua?
It's always something about, I mean, I'm not talking about the tension price, the, you know, past year cost compared to the present that we're basing it right now to get into the contract. What is the differences?
On...
Which is the commercial?
On the commercial end? Well, currently, we're emerging about $206,000 every three months on that increases. This brings it back down into line as far as a lot of the price points on the yardage of the dumpsters anywhere from $200 to $250 per container. So you're going to put that back in line where it was, what, as an increase because it's an industry standard?
Yeah, I'm asking, you know, not from the tension cost, but from the previous cost to the new cost, so what's the difference?
On the actual, on the overall...
Yeah. But a particular, any, you know, any particular, you know, doctor in particular?
Yeah, I know, it's probably about...
Can you just, can you just... And I'm just going to grab...
That went away, I can't...
Yeah, that's positive.
Just grab them, five weeks, six weeks, anyone, just read down the chart, because I'll read it as properly. So this takes five times a week, two-yard container. It was $2.5682.
Double the price.
It's now $5.62. Four-yard container, $3.32. And $6.72. And it sounds bad, but even the one at eight yards, which was $9.12, but remember, that was closer to almost $1,100.
It was $1,100.
So, again, not perfect. But this was irrespective of which one of the three companies you used. Each slightly different, some gave you better roll-off containers, some gave you better yards per week, or whatever it was. But in totality, all of them saying the same thing. The cost of the business had went up dramatically.
Correct, and one of them dropped off completely on negotiation, so we'll deal with two.
Yeah, this is a cost of the business, but it is... Yeah, this is, this is a process of business, but it is.
I'm not going to work on my job. My day doubled the price, but the next time you come over, my, my restaurant will eat noodles.
So, we just sit in here for a few minutes, given, we given this package of four pages, five pages to read and to make a quick determination that impact 1,300 household and over 200-something resident, uh, commercial customer. If we don't make the decision, we look back, if we make the decision, if we do our due diligence, do we fulfill our job to serve the public? And it put every council member in an awkward situation. If you don't move forward, it seems like, oh, you tried to hold off, but you say yes to go with the popularity and you fulfilling your due diligence of public. Meanwhile, you just, this package was given to me three minutes before the meeting. I don't have enough time to comprehend what it is, how do I inform, how can I be informed in the decision that impact many businesses and residents in the moral? And that might show double practice.
Is, you know, honestly, we've been having garbage discussions for a while. That, that's not bad. When you are able to reach a conclusion even as early as this morning, and probably close to nine, 10 o'clock range, it's, it's about the time period that some of us received this as well. That means that's when it's actually tabulating. Right? I, I'd love to give you three months notice, if that exists. I'd love to tell you that somebody sat on this for three months. You've heard it for, you know, a little while, and we had it for maybe six hours. But what we do know is this, is that every day we wait and don't pass it along, you will for sure lose one. There's, there's no debate on that. And we know that we have absorbed, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars already. So, nobody's sitting on it, waiting for something to happen. We're waiting until we have at least the ability to make a comprehensive decision that does make some sense to take it to the city council, which is sitting in front of you right now, and you had it for just about as long as everybody else has had it. And we know that every one of the decisions as to what dollar value you finally choose is a political decision. We know what the final number is, the contractors, contractors, and, and every day that we wait, two weeks, that's going to cost you $35,000. I would say, like any decision, let's implement what we know stops the bleeding. Let's take it as part of the budget process, at any time we can adjust the rates, and we won't be adjusting them terribly, right? It would be a marginal number. In fact, right now, it's, it's a pretty significant one. But if there was some other change between now and the time that we finish our budget discussions, that number would be relatively minor by comparison. So, thinking of that as putting a turn on it and to stop the bleeding, and if we want to add some discussions about, you know, some, some minor details, maybe, maybe a particular thing, I don't think garbage can be said much further than what you have, but certainly, we have to debate if what you're willing to charge a client. And that's what, that's what's on the table. It, it's not perfect, that's reality.
What I comprehend at this moment is that even though after we implement the force back to do the hybrid program, the cost to the city for residents or owner would be the allocation cost of the number of the employee, the hour that they serve, the tenacious service, that would be the cost for us to serve. Now, talking about the resident's pension rate, I would suggest to give the council some time to read through, and we can call a special meeting to go through that. That's why we can stop the bleeding that you're concerned, and you give the council the opportunity to do their due diligence.
Are any other questions on commercial, Mr. King?
No questions.
Mr. Quarr?
So, commercial-wise, we don't have much of discussion, you know, we have the price pretty much set, and so we're going to pass on the price, are we going to mark off the prices to charge the customer, or are we going to...
That's, that's what you're, you know, that's not free. This is what you were paying, the number you're actually paying because of the extension is higher than that, but this is from an end user standpoint, this is what you're paying, this is what you're paying now. So your, your changes, passing along, I believe this letter right here has our built-in fees.
It does, there is, there is a pass on to that.
But those are the requirements.
I mean, I, my, my question is, you know, so there's no, no, not room to negotiate for anything, so pretty much...
We've been with that over the last couple of weeks.
Yes.
I may ask, I'm, I'm...
We have been talking, so there's no, nobody else is, there's only two companies to negotiate with, the other company is higher than this one. We have actually met with them and, and had them reduce the fees over they are now, and with the anticipation from both of those individuals who represent waste, rather, there is no further room to negotiate as far as pricing scale.
I have no further because of the discussion for commercial, why, because it is what it is. But, you know, residential, you know, we need to figure out how cost to, to override hybrid, and then add our cost to, and so...
Well, residential, the, the lawsuits that we have are not substantial in comparison. We can defer setting the residential rate till later date. I would recommend for sure that you pass the contract, and then the commercial, so if that's reading...
I'll go with that, it's not, it's not set in a prior order of charging the residential, I'm an aggressive resident right now.
How are we going to pass a contract when we don't have a copy of, of it to us to see what it is? How do we pass something that we don't even see that? The commercial?
And the commercial is, here, these are basically just, you know, this is saying, whether we will do the same job or not.
Not only that, but I have a customer, Jeff Moss, uh, Jeff Baker, the city manager, probably on this bit, about how the land was in the contract written, and we found some rules and terms for us in the responsibility, and I don't want us to be such in a rush. Give us a few days, we can come back, buy us a special meeting, and we are informed, we did everything fully, we not going to be in a rush. Having the package and setting up a rate that impact 103, 1,300 resident, over 200 businesses in Morrow would in matter a few minutes. How do you do your due diligence?
Do you have any comment on that, or has that ordinance certain that, have that changed to a resolution? I'm going to take it to a, 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 to[1161.32] Sure.
All right. A bill to be entitled in that, ordinance two zero two two dash zero one, to provide a homestead exemption increase for the current assessed value of City of Morro at the law of taxes for city purposes, except taxes levied by the city to pay interest on and to retire bonded indebtedness for the current assessed amount of sixty thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars assessed value of that homestead residence in that city to provide for definitions, to specify the terms and conditions of the exemptions and the procedure related thereto, to provide for applicability, to provide for referendum, effective dates, non-matic appeal, to repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes. Being enacted by the General Assembly of Georgia, Section One, for the purpose of this act, the term "add the law of taxes for city purposes" means add the law of taxes for city purposes levied by, for, or on behalf of the City of Morro, including but not limited to taxes for maintenance, operation, fire protection services, and hospital services, but such terms shall not include taxes levied by the city to pay interest on and to retire bonded indebtedness. Homestead means homestead is defined in Qualified Income Section forty-eight dash five dash forty of the Official Code of Georgia annotated. Section Two, each resident of the City of Morro who has granted an exemption on a person's homestead from assessed va, from assessed value of eighty thousand dollars of City of Morro at the law of taxes for city purposes, except taxes levied by the city to pay interest on and to retire bonded indebtedness in the amount of the total assessed value of the homestead. A person shall not receive a homestead exemption granted by subsection A of this section unless the person or the person's agents files an affidavit with the official designated by the governing authority of the city. B of this section and such additional information relative to receiving such exemption as will enable such official to make a determination as to whether such owner is entitled to such exemption. The official so designated shall provide affidavit forms for this purpose. Section Three, the City of Morro or the official designated by the governing authority of or the designated thereof shall provide application forms for the exemption granted by this act and shall require such information as may be necessary to determine the showing continued eligibility of the owner for the exemption. Section Four, the exemption shall be claimed and returned as provided in Code Section forty-eight dash five dash five zero dot point one of the OCGA. The exemption shall be automatically renewed from year to year as long as the owner occupies residence as a homestead. After the person has filed proper affidavit and certificate or certificates as provided in subsection B of Section Two of this act, it shall be necessary to make application and file such affidavit and certificate thereafter for any year, any exemption shall continue to be allowed to such person. It shall be the duty of any person granted a homestead exemption under this act to notify the City of Morro or the official designated for such purpose by the governing authority of the city or the designated thereof, if person or any reason, for any reason becomes ineligible for that exemption. Section Five, the exemption granted by this act shall not apply to or affect any state taxes, county taxes, or Clayton County School District taxes for educational purposes. The homestead exemption granted in this act shall be in lieu, but not in addition to any other homestead exemptions applicable to City of Morro at the law of taxes for city purposes. Section Six, the exemption granted in this act shall apply to all taxable years beginning on or after January one, twenty twenty-three. Section Seven, unless prohibited by the Federal Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five is amended, the election superintendent of the City of Morro shall call and conduct an election as provided in this section for the purpose of submitting this act to the electors of the City of Morro for approval or rejection. The election superintendent shall conduct that election on any date during twenty twenty-two, on which a municipality shall conduct an election pursuant to the general laws of this state and shall issue the call and conduct that election as provided by general law. The superintendent shall cause the date and purpose of the election to be published once a week, for two weeks immediately preceding the date thereof in the official order of Clayton County. The ballot shall be written or printed thereon for the words yes, no. Shall the act be approved, which provides a homestead exemption from the City of Morro at the law of taxes for city purposes, except taxes levied by the city to pay interest on and to retire bonded indebtedness in the amount of the total assessed value of the homestead for all residents in that city? All persons designed to vote for the approval of the act shall vote yes, and those persons designed for rejection of the act shall vote no. If more than one-half of the votes cast in question are for the approval of the act, Sections One through Six shall be conformed to persons affected on January one, twenty twenty-three. If the act is not approved or if the election is not conducted as provided in this section, Sections One through Six of this act shall not become effective, and this act shall automatically be appealed on the first day of January immediately following the election date. The expense of such election shall be borne by the City of Morro, and shall be the election superintendent's duty to certify the results thereof to the Secretary of State. Section Eight, except for otherwise provided in Section Seven of this act, this act shall become effective on January one, twenty twenty-three. Section Nine, all laws and parts of law in conflict with this act are repealed. The City of Morro with the attestation and signature pages attached.
All, all we're basically doing is entering legislation to basically do what the vote, you know, we have that. It does appear that we, in a non-voting vote, so we got a public opinion, but after the legislative and the governor signs it, hopefully everything goes well. We've got Mayor Portman, I'm basically gonna walk that through for us, and work with everybody else in the voting, including the candidates, but that's all. Everybody's got good contacts with the state, who's more than most people who voted, but we may have to put it to another vote of citizens. And we've got to find a, a time period where the votes already been done, so we don't have to have the additional expensive elections for no apparent reason. But thank you, Chief. So this, uh, we have a housing concern and an issue moratorium. Mr. Michelle?
Uh, we have one more.
Go ahead. What was that one? You up to it on both?
So, I'm like a. Um, this is the, basically the updated budget calendar. It puts forth with the American Council, these are fluid dates, but I did set them. They don't work, folks, we can work with that. It just lays out the budget process. And the preamble here that I wrote for y'all, Dear Mayor Council, budgets reflect priorities. I believe that that pretty much sums it up, and this gives us enough time, if we start now through January, through the month of June, we should have ample time to review some of the pressing issues far as revenue and other economic concerns, to go on outside of our control.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff. Mr. Jeff? We've got about five minutes.
Hang on, I'm gonna talk real fast. And walk fast. There we go. Good evening, everyone. To the issue of the housing concern, so we have here in the City of Morro, an organization called Pat Split. And in short, Pat Split is, first of all, operating outside of our, our code. They are basically taking residential properties and turning them into roommate houses. So we have one that is currently operating within the City of Morro against our code. And there is another, there's Marty, there's another that they also have in Mar, that's not currently operational. So I'm sharing this with you, just to let you know, one, that it's, that's an issue, we are aware of it. They are operating out of Atlanta and they are popping up throughout the entire retro region. We have referred this over to our attorney, I see her in the backpack there, and they are doing their due diligence and their research of what our legal response is, so we are prepared to mount a legal challenge to stop them from operating within our city, operating against our code. They are operating, saying that, you know, they are providing affordable housing, but whether it's affordable housing or not, our issue is that they are illegally operating within the City of Morro. Are there questions so far about Pat Split? And as we continue to move through this process, under the advice of our city attorney, I will most definitely make sure that we keep you aware of what the process is and what our next steps are.
Of course.
Questions?
Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I, I am familiar that we've been trying to find a way to deal with this, though. The question.
Mr. Grant? Mr. Clark?
Question.
Mr. Grant, on this meeting, I'm sorry?
Um, the only questions that we have in common, I think that most of the residents in the City of Morro do not look favorably upon this development, because we have a community that promotes a safe environment, family, and that will not reproduce it to our myself.
Here, I'm set.
Excellent. Talk a little bit about your mixed use.
I'm very quick about the mix.
The, the moratorium, if you decide, will not be on the agenda, it may, it will be on the, the next section, put her the explanation out.
Correct. So to be reminded, we had a moratorium on our mixed-use development that has expired. It was for a hundred and twenty days that moratorium has expired, and we took no action at the time. Where we are right now is looking at the adoption of a master plan and looking at our mixed use, currently what our mixed-use zoning is and what our mixed-use zoning allows. We'll have a formal presentation and recommendations at our next council meeting about what we want to see, because part of this whole discussion is not necessarily that our mixed-use needs to change or does it need to change. What we're looking at is where we currently are, does our mixed-use get us where we're trying to go? Development is coming. We've got some dynamic opportunities here in the City of Morro and in the greater Clayton County community, but we need to make sure that our mixed-use zoning addresses what the, the type of, of development we want to seek and allows us the opportunity to really grow. We do not want to be a hindrance to development, want to make sure that we are poised and positioned for true growth. The next steps in this process is, is for myself and Marty and Mayor Council, I will follow up with you individually, to have a deeper conversation around mixed-use development and our zoning. From there, we then need to go to our planning and zoning, and then we need to come back to council to take action based on our recommendations and targets.
Excellent. Um, thank you. We've got about three minutes before the council meeting starts, just to kind of give you a, a quick rundown. Obviously, we have a swearing in ceremony, so most of you are here for that. We want, we have a session, which is going to be across the hall, and you're gonna watch this meeting go through here pretty fast. So, you know, we were preparing to pack this in here in time. We do have some housekeeping orders and some business we have to think about, but I assure you, we will do so in a speed manner. We, we have guests, remember, we have a number of, Ms., do you want to, you know, colleagues? I, I know I've got that Dr. Stewart in the front, which is easy to see, but after that, my eyesight isn't as good as it used to be, so I can't reach beyond about the third row.
Thank you. Let's call it this way. If you are an elected official, if you would either raise your hand or stand, we did invite a number of black female elected officials. There was an initiative with Representative Scott and Representative Vermau. They organized an opportunity last year for all of the black female elected officials in, in Clayton County to take a picture, and we were also provided an opportunity to write a letter to young women, encouraging them along their path where they are. And so we wanted to highlight this, uh, this group this evening as well while we're getting sworn in, uh, the legacy letters that was printed. Representative Vermau, when she arrived, she could certainly speak much better to, to that initiative, but we did want to just, you know, take the opportunity. There, there's a little bit of history. Clayton County has the most black female elected officials in the country, and so the opportunity to honor that, we're, we're thankful for them, we are excited about, so we just wanted to make sure that those who are here early, uh, had the opportunity.
Good morning.
Yes, one of our four members, yes, four members, Hill.
We really have a decent crowd out there.
Yes, yes.
But they can actually hear us, but I want you to kind of listen.
And, and Dr. Stewart, we, we don't want to leave out the name of the illustrious educational institution, Clayton State University. They're looking beyond the tree, so we're excited to also dive into that partnership. We will be painting the water tower. Uh, yeah. The city of Mar is the home of Clayton State University, and we should proceed accordingly, and we should acknowledge that and cherish and relish that relationship. So this is a symbolic moment that we are approaching, we're gonna have the opportunity to paint the water tower, so that anyone that drives down to before, they'll know that Mar is the home of Clayton State University, and we're very excited about that. It's a turning point, so we're excited.
Don't get the late Lakers.
The, the Lakers.
All right, y'all take like two minutes tops, and then we'll start.